Okay, I'm kind of flying blind here because before we went on, Mary could not, her microphone was not working. So I'm hoping she's ready because I'm going to pull her on. Mary?
Yes, how are you?
Oh, praise God. Okay.
Yes, there's something very strange going on. The powers that be.
I was gonna say, I wonder if it has anything to do with what we're talking about today?
You can always suspect. Wow, wow, what an interesting week we're having in the politics of Oklahoma Public Education.
Yeah, so it's Wednesday. We're not, we're not even to the end of the week yet. And we're all doing like the little green guy who's like, what the heck? What is going on with you people? What?
Well, it's interesting because a couple of times that I've talked to you in the last few months, I have been really digging into political attacks on the Oklahoma State Board of Education, particularly by our Attorney General and a group of what I would call uniparty legislators. And it just seems more people keep pigpiling on this board who, whatever your politics are, set them aside because this particular board has been doing an exceptional unprecedented job at getting perpetrator educators out of our schools. And the attacks have been extremely focused, if you've been sitting in that boardroom, on the portion of these meetings that are within executive session. And that is, they only go into those non-public portions when there's privileged information, cases of teacher misconduct, information about students that have been abused. So this is just one more pig pile on trying to stop some things that people clearly voted in that they were demanding change.
Yeah, so let, oh yeah. So I wrote an article the other day and I actually added some stuff to it today because I was given some new information. And so I thought what we'd do is we would just kind of start with the article. And I'll pull it in and then we'll kind of go through it. I mean, you and I have talked about it. And I'm sure some people have read it already and they're like, yeah, we've already read it. Okay, well, that's right. And I'm happy that you read it. But I want to go ahead and talk about it because there are a couple of extra things that I found that I added to it. And so we may want to talk about that. So here is the tweet that Governor Stitt put out. I believe Oklahoma, okay. "I believe Oklahoma's education infrastructure has fallen prey to needless political drama. I'm shaking up the State Board of Education to keep pursuing our top 10 agenda." Okay, all of that pisses me off. I mean, there's not like any part in there that doesn't piss me off. So here's what I wrote. "Republican governor sides with Democrats to keep the education status quo by firing state education board members engaged in protecting Oklahoma kids." And then I put edited, show I've added some stuff. So, so interesting today to see that Governor Stitt has fired three members of the state school board because it's clear that our education infrastructure has fallen prey to needless political drama, political drama. What does that actually mean? But then the governor loves to use catchphrases, you know, like political animal. Remember when he called us all political animals for jumping ship and on Kevin Wallace and trying to get Jim Shaw elected? So that was why I stuck that in there. Um, so seriously, what political drama? Like literally, what exactly, what political drama was the board engaging in? I mean, obviously, you see, he never said that, so you know it was all BS in the first place because he never actually gave you any specifics. He just used a generic term, political animals, political drama. He just, I think he just takes the word political and puts something after it, don't you?
I think so. And if you've been watching this board work, so put Ryan Walters to the side, right? If you've been watching this board work, they're a very focused and prepared board and they get a lot done. And I even watched one of the board members verbally chastise the group of legislators that was sitting there trying to pressure into their session. It's, it's within the recorded meeting saying, "We don't have nondisclosure agreements from all of you," talking about this privileged information, talking about why they're going out in the media and saying one thing and we're volunteers here just trying to protect kids and make education better. So I've seen this board actually try to tamp down the political drama.
See, how interesting is that? And you make a really good point too, though, Mary. So many people, when I've been out on the internet, looking at the comments that have come in from this, "Yeah, you get them. You take care of them, Governor Stitt." And you're like, "Do you even know these board members? Do you know anything about what you're talking about or are you just a Governor Stitt sycophant? Who's just like, yeah, whatever." I mean, it really made me mad. And on one post, I actually came back in underneath and I was like, "Did you even know any of the board members? Do you even know what they were doing?" I'm not trying to be ugly here. I'm just asking, you know, maybe Stitt was at fault here, you know?
Well, what's funny is, these are Stitt's appointees that he just pulled off of this board. And when you look at Katie Cubidow, she's a teacher, experienced from early childhood to high school. She has lots of board experience. She asked a lot of good questions in the meetings that I attended. Donald Burick, now he's a Tulsa Oil and Gas guy, but I'm going to tell you this about him. When Tulsa Public Schools was under, their accreditation was demoted to, to, to the extent, I mean, there were some big things going on there, still are, to the extent that they were coming every month and having to do a presentation to the board. They were tied very closely to OSDE staff who were trying to improve student outcomes there and help Tulsa Public Schools. Well, Donald Burick was very much like, "This is great. We like to see the progress, but we don't want to overreach our authority. We don't want to be keeping them here and using their time, which is tax day or money, to be doing this. So as soon as we think we can downgrade and go to them and watch what's going on without them having to bring a whole dog and pony show before the board every month." He was a real advocate for, "We have local control," and he was respectful of it. And then Kendra Wesson, she's been really amazing in the fight to protect kids. I mean, she ran a daycare center. She, she also brought, she's the president of a accounting firm. So she brought that accountability for funds to the mix that no one else on the board really has. She's been a local school board member. It's really tough to understand why you would take that kind of skill, differing skill and experience off the board.
And those are all excellent points. True. And you know what I said in the article too, and I pointed out that I'd never seen any of them. I mean, Kendra had been on our show a couple of times, but she was very conscientious about what she said. And I, I dare you, go back on our, on our YouTube channel or Rumble channel or whatever, find Kendra's videos, find one place she was political. Find it. I mean, she was very conscientious about it. So that's just nuts. And so I basically said, none of them were going up before, before, none of them were going on camera to talk about their jobs or to condemn the superintendent or the governor or creating MAGA videos in their cars. So what drama? And so this is where I said, "I think he means the drama of removing the teaching certificates of taxpayer-supported public school employees who are preying upon children." That drama. And then, thanks to you, seriously, does anyone realize that we've had a drag queen principal with a drunk driving and child pornography charge who only went away because of outside pressure by a local media outlet, yours truly, V1SUT, and a superintendent in Shawnee and a coach in Shawnee and incidents in Kingfisher and Nenakan Salina and Perry and We Woka, where districts are being sued because no one would protect students from employees who were hurting children? So is it that kind of drama Stitt was after?
If you ask the teachers' union, maybe so.
And that's it. So right there, he's aligned himself with the teachers' unions just by trying to get rid of these people that are really hurting children, liter- literally legitimately, not just, ew, that paper wasn't an A. I mean, legitimately hurting children. And Kendra, you know, I don't know how long I've known Kendra, maybe a couple or three years now, I don't know, but I have found this woman to be the most transparent. She's hardworking. She's so committed to what she's doing. I mean, when I would talk to her on the phone, she was like, "Well, you know, this time I went out to so-and-so school district and I was out there talking to them and then I had to go, I wanted to go over here and I wanted to check that." And I'm like, Kendra, you're not even getting paid. I mean, what, what are you doing here, you know? I mean, so this was a person who was truly engaged in what she was doing. She was active in it. She was transparent. She was hardworking. Her removal is nonsense. I mean, his, his removal of her is crap. I mean, I, there's no other way to say that. That's just crap. I mean, it's absolute nonsense. And I even said, because I got so mad, I said, "Who in the hell fires someone like Kendra Wesson? Who does that?" But you made the point earlier that he, he appointed these people and then turned around and fired them. How many times has he done that? He appoints these people, then he fires them, then he gets new appointments, then he fires them. He doesn't want a job, a board to do what the board is there to do. He wants the board to do what he wants them to do. And if you won't just jump to, aye aye, Governor Stitt, he'll just take, he'll just can you. He'll just can you.
It is interesting and more and more information is out. We'll get there in this discussion about what it was that he may have been trying to control.
Well, let's talk about that. So, um, and I mentioned she and the board were actively involved in attempting to remove teachers and other personal, uh, public school personnel who are a danger to our children. So now all of them that are left, the two of them that are left are Governor Stitt's attorney at Gateway Mortgage, Sarah LaPac, and Zach Archer, who, like Governor Stitt, works in the financial industry.
Correct.
So what do they know about education? But then again, you know, an attorney and a financial advisor seem to be right up Stitt's alley, right? I mean, those are the people that he admires. So, you know, they don't have any education experience and they're sitting on a state board. But then you look at, at people like the Hillarys, who have donated a whole lot of money to his campaign. And one of them sits on the state regents and has never even graduated college. So it doesn't really matter to him who sits on a board. I mean, we don't want the people sitting on the board to have expertise in the board that they're sitting on. Why would we do that? I mean, so long as you're an attorney or a financial person and, you know, that, then we're good. So then.
Interesting in the people that he kept. So Sarah LaPac, as you say, she was Assistant General Counsel at Gateway Mortgage from 2012 to 2017. So that is Governor Stitt, Gateway Mortgage Group, a, a financial services and mortgage company. What I find really interesting is that's not included on her bio on the State Board of Education.
No, I looked.
And it should be included in her bio. Taxpayers have a right to know. That should be a potential conflict of interest that's disclosed. The other thing about Zachary Archer, a, and I don't have any information saying this is happening, but he is in financial services. So he's the Managing Director at Great Plains Investment Services. So he advises clients about all kinds of matters. They're owned by, it's a, it's a financial advisory practice of Ameriprise Financial Services. And they do services through Rocket Mortgage and other things like that. The question should be asked, and should have been asked a long time ago of Zachary Archer. Does he feed clients to Gateway Mortgage? Does he use services from Gateway Mortgage for his clients? I do not know. What was the connection? How did he end up on this board? I think taxpayers need to know. We need to make a revival of recognizing and explaining conflicts of interest.
No, 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 we don't because that would be accountability. I mean, Mary, I'm not sure, what, what state do you live in? You, do you think you live in a red state?
Seventy-seven counties, all red. Thank you.
So what about the new board members? So the first one, the first we'll talk about is Michael Tinney, who is the husband of Ginger Tinney of Professional Oklahoma Educators. He, now he's an oil and gas attorney, but I guess we should be ecstatic that he's at least connected to education so far because we're 2-0 on the education thing on the board at this point.
I'm sorry, I'm not ecstatic. Let me tell you why.
Okay.
So Ginger, as you said, Professional Oklahoma Educators. And for people that don't understand who they are, because they're not as often talked about as the Oklahoma, the OEA, Oklahoma Education Association. That's been around for decades and it was almost like, you know this Jenny, almost like the alternative to the OEA. The OEA sort of answers to the National Teachers Union and this was the alternative. This is where teachers could join here, pay their dues, they can get $2 million worth of liability insurance coverage. They can get access to a team of attorneys down there at the POE if they're ever accused of anything and a host of other things. So who we have here sitting on the board now, well, they, they all have to be approved by the Senate, these three that Stitt has proposed. But if Michael Tinney sits on the board, his wife is a lobbyist for public education. She is a registered lobbyist. His son, Daniel, is a registered lobbyist for public education. His daughter, Rachel, used to be a registered lobbyist for public education. And his wife is the one who oversees a team of on-staff attorneys who defend teacher predators. Now he's going to sit on the board and review those cases for decertifying teachers who are dangerous? This doesn't smell right.
Well, I, I knew Ginger back in the Common Core days. And Ginger, I mean, she started POE and it was, you know, she, I know she wanted it to be more of a Christian alternative, you know, to, to what was out there now. And Ginger's actually on, she said he taught school too. So I mean, again, I, at least there's some connection. But right now, like we said, we're still 2-0 and we've gotten some comments. So let me throw some in.
Well, hang on, and I want to say since Ginger's listening, I, I wonder if she sees the potential conflict of interest here.
Oh, she said she did not start POE. I thought she did. Okay, sorry, Ginger.
She see a potential conflict of interest in a family full of lobbyists and now her husband, and I understand that he's not a lobbyist, but that at least taxpayers have a right to know that.
And we'll, we'll see. Let me finish up these, let's finish up these couple of comments. So Julia says, "Some people want to rule, some people want to lift each other's up," and that's true. "And selling kids is profitable." I mean, who was it that we were talking to? I think it was, oh, Sherry. Sherry came on and was talking about how we're literally selling kids for apps, right? I mean, there's a thing where, I mean, in, in public school, we're not so worried about the kids as much as we are the apps and the applications and the things that we can provide to them. And she was making a really good point about that. And then Becky said, "I keep wondering what stance these three had that Stitt saw was an obstacle. Could it be Saint Isador? I never even thought about Saint Isador."
Oh, I did.
Dr. Pelham. See, I had.
You know, yes, Dr. Pelham, I think we should go through, when we get through this, just a little timeline of all the political attacks on this State Board of Education.
Yeah, um, we need to be collecting data on government, not the other way around. And she said, when I said red states, she said red is in China. Ginger said he was also the Oklahoma City Chapter Leader of Christian Legal Society.
And Ginger, we, I, I am not downplaying any of your husband's credentials, but I would say to the Oklahoma voter, the label of Christian is not something that necessarily builds trust anymore. It's been misused so much. What we're really talking about is the, the lobbying is a huge thing. A family full of lobbyists having a member on the board is really concerning because what happens with lobbyists and teachers organizations, education unions, is that legislators come and go and elected officials come and go, but those are the folks that are always running around the Capitol. And they have a very big influence on public ed policy. What was voted for in 2022 was that parents would now have a much bigger influence on education policy.
Well, and I don't think that's there. Ginger also said, "We don't defend child molesters." So wrong. You attack people without speaking with them.
Ginger, you are free to speak up. You, your website tells about what comes with your, your dues. It tells about your liability policies and it tells, it talks specifically about all kinds of defenses in that area that it could have to do with represent employment, due process hearings, job-related legal issues, confidential attorney-client privilege. It says that you can represent them on terminations, disciplinary matters, illegal discrimination, leave evaluations, contracts and more. So I am lumping that in there. If you have some policy where if someone's accused of misconduct with a child and your policy is that you don't defend them, I would highly recommend you put that on your website and you make it public because there's an assumption that you will be their legal counsel under that $2 million liability policy.
Okay, so let me, let me keep going because I think there's some more stuff in here that we need to find out about. So that is Michael Tinney. So Ryan DeThridge is a small business owner and the Kingfisher County 911 Director. He has a double major in agriculture and also finance. He is from Kingfisher. If he's from Kingfisher, then he's a resident of Kingfisher Public School System where the district was slapped with a $5 million lawsuit over charges of abuse by Kingfisher football coach Jeff Myers. Myers, who was banned from any further activity with the team and whose contact contract was not to be renewed by the Kingfisher School Board, was still employed as of December last year when Kingfisher had to let go 22 positions to pay the settlement from the suit after the Kingfisher County Excise Board refused to pass the settlement cost on to taxpayers. So that's very interesting. I mean, we can put that and then we found this. So he has another business that in his small business is called The Grounds Guys of Edmund. And it's, he owns that business. But then also apparently in 2010, he was a sales per, he owned a company called The Amp Control of Piedmont. Or he was president of Amp Control. And he took advantage of, or the, the group took advantage of the electric car tax credit craze. And so took some federal income tax subsidies for the vehicle. And apparently, he also had something called WeGo and it qualified for a state tax credit of 50% of the price of the electric vehicle. So I thought that was kind of interesting. So.
And the only other thing I know about him is that he also has a part-time position with the Oklahoma Baptist Disaster Relief Organization. So, which kind of fits in with, he's a 911 emergency director. And I also saw that he had, he had the landscaping business. I don't have any other information about him. The only thing that I would ask is, I don't really understand the value added to the board, the skillset that might be applicable to public education. And look, I, I think that the board should be filled also with parents who want to stay in their kid's education. So I don't believe you have to be an educator or a teacher to be on this board. But I'm not sure what skillsets he's bringing that would be advantageous to the board.
Well, but you know, here's the thing. It's, it's the State Board of Education. It oversees what the Department of Education is doing in Oklahoma. And in some of these cases, it's financial and you need to have somebody with financial experience. In some of these cases, it's policy. You need to have somebody with policy experience. But in a lot of these instances, it's about education itself. And I saw something where I think it was Governor Stitt said something about, you know, part of the, what prompted this was the flatlining in the NAEP scores. So how much does the State Board have to do with NAEP scores?
Um, well, I would say that if you look exactly, if you understand with the State Board of Education that they have two tools with which to affect change, two real legislative tools to affect change within schools. We are a local control state. The local school board in your town controls your schools and is making all really important decisions that happen about funding, teacher pay, all kinds of things that people try to put up to the state level. So the State Board of Education can affect teacher certifications. So if a teacher is found to have committed misconduct or some, for some other reason, that they can suspend and then go through a due process to eventually revoke a teacher certification. So that's one tool. The other tool is accreditation. So districts are accredited by the, by the OSDE and there are five stages of accreditation and the board can downgrade the accreditation of a school, which is kind of interesting. So you have to know about this school board. They voted through rules that for the first time are linking funding to the accreditation. That is blasphemy in establishment public education. They're also linking things like teacher conduct, how they handle investigations of abuse, those kind of things to the accreditation process, which could lead to defunding. So this board's been pretty aggressive. Now, you have to remember, when they voted through their new rules, suddenly Attorney General Gettner Drummond popped up and said, at the behest of literally a couple of Democrats in the legislature, that they can't do that. It has to go through the legislature. They can't just vote through their rules. That is not how it worked in the past. So no, the education establishment is not in favor of the new rules that this board put in place. Number one, to increase student outcomes by one of the only ways they have, degrading your accreditation if that happens and threatening your funding and certifications. There's a whole bunch of other rules that had to go through the legislature and they, they made it through with the fight. But no, that the juggernaut, the political juggernaut is very much against this change. So they don't, they, they, of course, the State Department of Education could have good supports and programs and things, but legally speaking, they don't have the kind of effect on student outcomes and not anything close to what you're going to have at the local level where students are actually learning.
Right. Um, so Ginger wants to know who the other person is that's speaking.
Oh, well, I'm, I'm a journalist and my name is Mary and I encourage you to go to v1sut.com. That's v1sut. It's all over everything. It's on my face, v1sut.com and take a look at the publication. Subscribe if you like what you see. Thanks.
And she wants us to, to remember that they are also parents and grand, or she is also parents and grandparents. And then she wanted us to know that our smack talk is the reason why nobody wants to serve. So, and I, I don't know if, I wasn't, I wasn't aware that just doing research on somebody and putting up facts with smack talk. But I mean, it may be and maybe people take it that way. I mean, I'm sorry that you do, but that's not what we're trying to engage in here. I think what we're trying to engage in is a little, what, what I think is, should be extremely normal and something that people should do in their government, which is if they see something that doesn't make a lot of sense, it makes no sense to fire somebody like Kendra Wesson or Katie Cubidow. It didn't make any sense at all. And so it's really important to know who's following them up then on this board because the board is the State Board of Education. It's important to know who is serving on that board. And I think, let, let's just continue to, to go on a little bit here because again, this. Because again, this man that we just talked about a minute ago, who, Ryan Deathridge, who's from Kingfisher, he doesn't have any, he has finance experience and some other things, but not education experience. So let's talk about the last one, Chris Van den Honden. And I, Van den Hond, I'm not sure. It sounds like a Dutch name. I probably am butchering it and I don't mean to. Sorry about that. He's listed in the governor's press release as being from Tulsa. But I went to his LinkedIn page and he's actually from Stroud. So I'm wondering if, because I know the, the school board members have to come from different quadrants. So I don't know if Stroud is in the same quadrant with Tulsa. We'll have to see that. But he's from Stroud, which is in Lincoln County. And Lincoln County is the county which just voted out Appropriations Chair Kevin Wallace. He's chief financial owner at Southwest Fuel Systems LLC and Mint Turbine. So it says that on his LinkedIn page. Apparently he's, Mr. Van den Hond is a friend of Mr. Stitt's friend, Kevin Wallace. So here's Governor Stitt and Kevin Wallace at the shot show. And here's Governor Stitt coming out to actually, he was campaigning for Kevin Wallace during that time. Kevin Wallace posted that to his Facebook page. And in the Lincoln County News Herald, report from Kevin Wallace on April 6, 2022, Mr. Wallace says, quote, "I was fortunate to be invited to dinner on the eve of this event with many representatives from the industries. Chris Van den Hond, Chief Financial Officer and Chief Strategy Officer for Southwest Fuel Systems and Mint Turbines in Stroud also attended." Van den Hond spoke recently at the Stroud Chamber of Commerce banquet. "It was a pleasure to get to see him again and to discuss his company's growth in our house district." But that's not all. I feel like Monty Hall and then I thought it was funny because it rhymed. Mint Turbines has been collecting Oklahoma quality jobs incentive payments since 2020. And in 2024, his company actually got a shout out from the Oklahoma Commerce Department and included the following text. "With nearly 72,000 square feet of factory warehouse space, Mint Turbines is one of the few certified MRO facilities in North America. Known for its commitment to quality and customer service, the company serves both commercial and military sectors, ensuring top-tier turbine engine performance and reliability. Mint Turbines has partnered with Aces at numerous trade shows, this is a Department of Commerce thing, to boost their visibility within the aerospace industry and showcase their capabilities to key industry leaders." They also received about $100,000 in training reimbursements from the Department of Career and Technology Education and a $2 million federal loan from the Export Bank. So there it is. It was in 2011. $2 million value of loan, loan guarantee or bailout assistance, $2 million.
So what?
So.
And then, none of us have had time to reach out to these folks. This just bombed on the whole state yesterday and a lot happened yesterday. We'll have to get into that. There's more than this. So there hasn't even been time to give a 24-hour window in a request for comment, which is just a standard professional courtesy. But what I would say about this gentleman is if you were going to use him, you put him on the wrong board. He even got money as far as reimbursements from career and tech. So for those who don't know, we have an Oklahoma State Board of Education. That's our PK to 12 schools and oversees that. We also have a virtual board for our virtual charter and charter schools. And then we have the Career and Tech Board. So this gentleman might actually be able to bring something of value to the Career and Tech Board rather than being on the State Board of Education.
Well, I mean, that's entirely possible. So let's, and I was gonna, I took a movie to go through all of the various individual jobs incentive, quality jobs incentive payout studies taken since 2020. And I forgot to stick that in. But I mean, it's been numerous and it's not like what I found out about Paycom where they've gotten millions and millions of dollars. It's not that. But I mean, it's several hundred thousand dollars for that. So, and again, we're not talking smack. This is just what we, you know, found.
Right. I think this is good for taxpayers to know and they can research and connect dots on their own.
I think so. So basically what we're finding at this point is that nobody on the state school board has any education experience at all. And only Attorney Mike Tenny is involved with somebody who does. So I'm sure that it'll be super helpful to Oklahoma's kids and will put us well on our way to improving our NAEP scores. But then it was interesting to me that Julia Kurt put out a press release shortly after the shakeup. And it basically, she said, "Ensuring all children have a great education is a top priority for Senate Democrats, but the state superintendent and his board have continually placed politics over Oklahoma's children. I previously stated the governor had the power to appoint new members to the board in order to improve accountability. This action has been a long time coming and is a positive step on behalf of Oklahoma schools." So I guess, so are we saying then that Governor Stitt did the bidding of Democrat leader Senator Julia Kurt?
It's hard to say at this point, but I would say this, if he was trying to, felt like there was a a missing skill set on the board, something that would bring greater accountability and something that would better serve the parents of Oklahoma. There's been an empty board seat on the State Board of Education for a year. And it wasn't as though they added another skill set. It was basically just taking three people off. And there was also a comment made publicly about how those folks voted with Ryan Walters 100% of the time or something like that. So something insinuating that they were always right with Walters. I found it really interesting that Governor Stitt put this out on X. And he said, "I believe Oklahoma's education infrastructure has fallen prey to needless political drama. I'm shaking up the Board of Education to keep pursuing our top 10 agenda," right? And then he attaches his official statement.
Right.
But then, let's see, four hours later, he came back and said, "I'm grateful to the service of the outgoing members of the Board of Education. They have brought much-needed reforms and helped root out liberal ideology in our schools. I'm excited for the next two years as we continue to pursue a top 10 agenda." The two statements don't align very well and I think that there must have been some blowback from perhaps the.
Everybody.
For parent rights for many years. So I'm not sure what happened there. If he was happy and that they were bringing much-needed reform, it again starts to question why this happened and I don't think we actually know.
Well, and so then Senator Mark Mann came out and said, you know, he took two years for the governor to recognize what Democrats have known since day one of Ryan Walters' term. "Our state superintendent is hindering our kids' ability to teach, learn, our ability to teach and our business, our business community's ability to recruit workers that come to Oklahoma. I'm sorry, Senator Mann, but we do a pretty good job of that through taxpayer dollars. I've shown that over and over in the last two or three weeks. I don't think there's any problem there." And I mean, we should be happy, I guess, that Democrats are happy. And then we talked about this too. The other thing that sounds super fishy here is that the governor would decide yesterday, which was the day that Auditor Cindy Byrd was to make her audit of Tulsa Public Schools public, to make the school board shakeup announcement based on some stupid premise of political drama. And the governor just had Bixby Superintendent Rob Miller stand with him for a state of the state address touting the equally stupid cellphone bill. Even funnier, Superintendent Miller created his district's policy without a law, yet the governor pointed to him for support of the bill that would create a law that would make schools create a cellphone policy, which I thought was local control. And I thought every time we used to go talk to people in the legislature about anything that we thought was important, like Common Core, getting that out. Well, that's local control. That's local control. So I love the way that the term "local control" is used interchangeably whenever anybody wants it. So that's kind of ridiculous.
Yes. In politics, I always suspect when things hit simultaneously that one, whether they were going to do the second event or not, that it is timed as a major distraction from something else that is negative for somebody in politics. And I highly suspect that's what we're looking at here with the Tulsa Public Schools audit.
Ginger, I'm just going to flip back really fast. Ginger would like to know your last name. And so I guess I would just suggest that she reach out to you on visit v1sut.
Sure. Yeah, Ginger can reach out to me. The email, which is on every single, again, go to visit.com, v1sut.com. You can learn more about the publication. You can, on the bottom of every article is the ways to contact us. Feel free to. Thanks. I don't really want to sideline the conversation so much by one person. So Ginger, appreciate your input, but this isn't, this is a place where people gathered to share information about what's going on in their government. We're probably not going to respond too much to the rest of your comments because we only have a short period of time. Thanks. I do encourage you to go to the publication.
Sherri said, "The State Board of Education also sits on the Career Tech Board," which is another good point. Julia says, "Involved parents were thrilled with Kendra Wesson." And that is absolutely, I think that's why I'm so mad about it because parents loved, what's not to love about Kendra? I can't, I'm going to get mad again. Julia says, "I'm sick of weirdos coming to the state of Oklahoma to teach our kids." And Ralph said, "Distraction?" Yes, 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 yes. So we may have hit on something there. I'm not really sure.
Yes. Do we want to, go ahead and finish and then we'll move over to the distraction because I think Ralph has got some good instincts.
Let me just, we're almost done. Interestingly, I know I keep using that word. I just thought that was funny. Auditor Byrd was unable to release the findings because a truckload of lawyers working for TPS invoked an obscure law to halt its release. At her press conference, she said, "The findings are significant" and that she wasn't allowed to provide the results to the public because of a law that no one had ever used in her 28 years as an auditor. Don't forget, Governor Stitt's from Tulsa and he just had the jinx superintendent. So I don't know. I'm not, I can't say anything, but the only way we can learn is by pointing things out. And I point out, this state's in trouble. The people who run it don't have our best interests. I mean, there's just no way. So I wanted to point out one last thing. I found this out and I was a little, I was super, super annoyed by this. So according to a, I believe it was in, I'm not sure which article it, or which paper it was in. Hold on. Oklahoma Watch, I just flipped over to look at it. Oklahoma Watch had an article that they ran in 2019 about Governor Stitt's financial interests, that he had released them in 2019. And when you looked at his financial interests, remember, he sold his part in Gateway Mortgage. I think that was what it was. He sold his part of it. And then after that, then Farmers Exchange Bank of Cherokee, and is that Cherokee, Oklahoma? I don't, I don't know. So that was, Gateway Mortgage and Farmers Exchange Bank of Cherokee actually fused. And then it was called Gateway First Bank. It was what it was called. But in 2019, Governor Stitt still had all kinds of, he still had investments that were linked to Gateway. And I went out and looked because I love that tracker, incentive tracker so much. And I went out and looked and I was just shocked to find that Gateway Mortgage or Gateway First Bank, Gateway First Bank, look, there's $235,000, has been getting hundreds, hundreds and thousands of quality jobs incentive payments. These are just grants. They're just payments. And I just find that, that seems weird to me that if the governor still has financial assets that include any part of the Gateway and yet our state is giving tax dollars to Gateway First, that bothered me. So to conclude, I just said again, the State Board shakeup was wrong. It's not going to help our NAEP scores that we got rid of Kendra Wesson, for example, or Katie Kubo. It's not going to, I mean, so make no mistake, none of this, none of it was about helping Oklahoma kids. Thank you.
It's hard to make the case that it was. I could make a better case that this was political drama than I can for, than helping Oklahoma kids. But I want to, do you want to go back to talk a little bit about that TPS audit for a minute?
I do, but I just wanted to pull this up because Sherri says, "What about the rumor that this was about the vote for Ryan Walters immigration policy?"
Well, I think it's a little more than a rumor. I have from a very reliable source that there is, there was a background fight going on between Stitt and Walters over Walters' statements and policy concerning immigration. So you have to go back a bit and remember that Stitt was very public in his support for bringing 26,000 Afghan refugees to resettle in Oklahoma following the disastrous withdrawal of US troops from Afghanistan under President Biden. Okay? Byrd did an audit. So Cindy Byrd, our state auditor and inspector, same one that did this Tulsa Public Schools audit that was supposed to be released yesterday. She did an audit of OMBS not very long ago. And what it showed is that there were a lot of funds that went, that were unallowable funds, that were, that means that they were not supposed to be used for those purposes. That went to a number of sources, including, one of the largest was Catholic Release Services for resettling those Afghan refugees. And if you, if you weren't able to make this connection at the time, you know, Governor Stitt said that these people would be vetted and he also made a public statement saying that they would find all resources available to help these people resettle and acclimate in Oklahoma. Well, before the November election, I believe it was in October of last year, the FBI and federal investigators arrested a 27-year-old man and also a more public school student who was the 27-year-old man's brother-in-law for plotting a terrorist attack against voting sites in November. That 27-year-old man was part of that program and part of the resettlement efforts coming out of Afghanistan. So we have some conflict there. Cindy Byrd is not a minion of Stitt. And as a journalist, what I've seen of her and of her audits is that they're very thorough and no one is protected. The truth is the truth, which I have a lot of respect for. So that sort of happened. And then we have the Tulsa Public Schools audit that was expected to come out. And let me just say, going back, okay, clarifying. Yes, correct, correct. So someone was wanting to know if Ginger Tenny was on the board or if it was her husband. It's her husband who's an attorney. Correct. Okay. So back to Tulsa Public Schools. The Tulsa Public Schools audit was requested in 2022. So it's been two years coming and this wasn't anything anyone was rushing to do. There were questions about how Deborah Gist ran that district and the finances for years and years and years. Those of you who don't remember, former TPS Superintendent Deborah Gist, she actually ran the DC Public Schools. She was involved at the state level in the Rhode Island Public Schools, State Department of Education, and they tanked in outcomes during her tenure and then she brought it home to Tulsa. So there were a lot of questions about that. So a TPS board member with a lot of grassroots publicity requested this audit. And there was a lot of public pressure for its release. Byrd said in her press conference yesterday that Tulsa Public Schools made it very hard to get this done in a timely manner. Okay? So the TPS attorneys did invoke a very rarely used, I've never seen it used, and Byrd, as you said, hadn't seen it used in her 28 years. A small portion of state law that gives the district the option, if they invoke it, to have a 14-day window between when it's released and between when the report is given to them, an audit report is given to them, and when it's released to the public. Now, you need to know that Cindy Byrd did give them the report ahead of her conference and they knew this was coming. Okay? So this is all happening at the same time. You should also know that Tulsa Public Schools was very, very public in December about saying that they were not going to follow Ryan Walters' statement that we're going to collect the immigration status of students. If you were at that State Board of Education meeting, it was really interesting because they talked about why it's so important to have that information and to know where these kids are coming from. The Oklahoma City Public School Superintendent spoke and said, "In Oklahoma." "In Oklahoma City Public Schools alone, their students speak 71 different languages." And they had a long discussion about how to plan and put supports in place for these immigrants that are coming from everywhere over the last four years. How do you possibly do that? And how critical this information is. So Tulsa Public Schools, they have a bilingual immigrant refugee services department, and they have an entire staff wrapped around immigration with a woman named Mara Carmen Mitchell who runs that. And she and the superintendent of Tulsa Public Schools did an interview in a video and went in the main media, said, "We're not going to follow this." It says on their website, "They will never collect that information. They will not release it to any federal immigration agency." So there's a really big clash going on here. Your thoughts?
Well, it's interesting to me, too. And let me throw in a couple of comments, if you don't mind. Whitney said, "Stitt and Walters have been very friendly until now, given their sudden change of posture. I think Oklahomans are curious. That doesn't mean we know anything. We're just trying to be informed." And then, of course, Julia said, "Cindy Byrd is already DOGE. Stitt doesn't need to sidestep her." And that's a really great point, and you made that point as well, Mary, that, you know, she is, she is definitely a, an elected official who takes her job seriously and is for the people.
She is. And, and let me go back to, I don't know that this is connected, but I think we're all watching what's happening at the federal level with DOGE, the Department of Government Efficiency. So they went into the US Department of Education, and they're now canceling unneeded contracts, trainings, all kind of things, to the tune of hundreds of millions of dollars daily. There's a new update coming up all the time. So, so much federal funding flows into the states. You cannot help but think that there is some big information coming for Oklahoma Public Education. Also, USAID, the largest recipient, USAID, I think, I don't think the American public has ever been so shocked about the level of corruption.
Oh, yeah. Holy cow.
The DOGE, since the DOGE programmers have run their algorithms on our federal agencies. But USAID, the largest recipient, Catholic Relief Services, the same one that got the misappropriated money here in Oklahoma to bring 26,000 people here, which really was against the will of the people, if you really were watching public sentiment on that. We've got the Pope now whining about Trump policies about this because the money flow is stopping. And the facts have yet to catch up to it at the state level, but I really believe it's coming.
Well, I was going to point out something that on, give me a second here to throw this in. So I wrote an article, I guess this was last May. Oklahoma Governor Kevin Stitt signs illegal immigration bill only to open door to visa task force. And that's the other thing that just really, I mean, gets my blood going because he, he was quick to say, "Oh, yes, you know, we're, well, we're going to be strong on illegal immigration." But then what he did was, he just created this visa task force, which, by the way, none of the conservative Hispanics that we talked to were put on that task force.
Interesting.
So they weren't on it. And as a matter of fact, if you go back and watch that video that we did with Camilo, he talked about the fact that, you know, the people that he knew that were on it were very liberal Hispanics. And so it was a very partisan thing, but he put this thing together and then basically shut the door on what he, you know, what he said by creating this task force that was going to figure out how people with visas could better work in Oklahoma.
Um, it's interesting.
I mean, which kind of goes to, I mean, what is, what actually was his stance on that? I mean, publicly, it was one thing, but clearly on another one that he was trying to, you know, there was something else going on. So.
It's hard to say, but when we start taking this back to what happened yesterday with this audit, with the timing and with the State Board of Education being essentially gutted. If immigration was the issue, the political punching bag between Walters and Stitt, I, and that this was Stitt's way of trying to keep Walters within his lane, I would say that Governor Stitt has forgotten that Walters is an elected official. So again, you're overstepping the vote and the will of the people. And judging by comments that you see now on social media on this, people are not happy about that. They're, and they're also not happy about the Attorney General's attacks on the State Board of Education. There's been a lot of lawfare. It comes out in the media as one thing, and then when the facts come out, it's a very different thing. So it's been very much political chess with what is the most important thing that we do in the state? Protect and educate our children. And I think people are done with this. I don't think this looks good for anyone. So should we talk a little bit about the attacks that have come down on the State Department of Education? This is just the last one and one more person piling on.
Yeah, no, go ahead.
All right. So, so let's look at that. And really what's happened since 2023, January of 2023, when we got a new state superintendent and, and really a new seated board here, they have suspended or revoked an unprecedented number of teaching certificates, which has not been to everyone's liking in the education establishment. Prior, if you looked at prior boards and administrations, it was almost as though someone had to be arrested or convicted, a teacher, before they were going to take such of an action to, to ensure that that person didn't end up back in the classrooms. And what you have to understand about Oklahoma, and we've talked about this so many times, Jenny, the statute of limitations rarely is someone who has actually done these things and now being reported going to be able to be prosecuted. So in, in our state, the statute of limitations was raised in 2017 so that people could report to the age of 45, because these students don't report when they're in school. They report much later after a lot of trauma and processing, right? But that law that said you can report these crimes and hold somebody culpable up to the age of 45 was not made retroactive. So we think that we, these people should have been arrested, or we shouldn't be looking at their teaching certificate? The truth is, the vast majority can't be prosecuted under state law. So people have to understand that. So to take a different stance and say, "No, we are actually going to staff up in the Oklahoma State Department of Education with real, experienced investigators who come from law enforcement. These are detectives. We're going to actually look at these things and see what happened and determine on our own. We're going to give a pass over the district, because so often districts are hiding that abuse, and they're not reporting as mandated reporter law requires them. We're going to give them this awareness system where now parents can go straight to the State Department of Education. And you watched as they were finally doing these things. There were a lot of times during Joy Hoffmeister's tenure when there were, there was no investigator in the building. They hadn't even employed one. These things were not being looked at. So when you see more and more being revoked, that's it. They have a machine now to be able to really look into these things. Well, then the attacks started. The attacks started immediately. I mean, we talked about saying Isador that that was, so we're talking about, and everybody has different opinions about it. This would have been the first virtual charter school with public funding that was also a religious school. So Attorney General Drummond dropped a lawsuit on that, claimed it was unconstitutional. Our state Supreme Court agreed. It's actually all the way up to the Supreme Court, and it was just granted a review for late April. So the, the United States Supreme Court is going to look at that. Oddly, Amy Comey Barrett did not participate in reviewing that to see if they would take that up. She's recused herself, but it didn't give a reason, which was kind of interesting. So that is coming up, but it was Attorney General Drummond who filed the lawsuit to stop that action by the board. Then we had this whole mess about funding. They came after the board, the OSDE, the State Board of Education, and Ryan Walters. A group of legislators, very publicly through the media, said that they were withholding funds. So the board is, State Board of Education is withholding these funds that were maternity benefits for teachers and school security funds. Well, by the time that the dust cleared and everyone had forgotten about it and people had time to do research, it was actually the legislature that was holding those up. One of them, they did not appropriate it correctly, so the OSDE could not give the money to the districts because it was misappropriated. And then the other one, the legislature hadn't made it eligible for rollover. So the funds flowed one year, but then the next year, the OSDE could not give them to the school again, the rollover, the excess amount, because the legislator had not deemed them as rollover funds, and they had to go back and do a correction. But they were attacking the board because of that. The rules that we talked about, the State Board of Education made a whole bunch of new rules. They made them go through the legislature. That is a whole new precedent. So the fighting continues, right? And then we got into this executive session fight where a whole bunch of legislature, legislators and the state legislator, and let me, I can tell you who they were. Mark McBride was probably at the forefront of this. He's no longer. He's termed out.
He was a Republican. He was listed as a Republican.
Yep. Danny Sterling, Republican.
Still there, Republican.
Yep. Dick Lowe, Republican.
Still there.
Ronnie Johns, Republican. Tally, he's gone. He was voted out. Osborne, Republican. Van Kuren, Republican. And this is from the House, Jacob Rosenkrantz, who's a Democrat. So they were pushing, and then there was also Senator Adam Pugh, who's a Republican, and Senator Mary Boren, who's a Democrat. And they were wanting to interrupt, be part of, get into the executive sessions of board meetings, which is where they discuss cases of teacher misconduct where privy to information about children and families and teachers, employees are shared and must be protected. This went on for months. This went on for months, and it held up the suspension of quite a few teachers who, from what I understand about case information, have no business being around children. So there came a point in this fight, as it went on for months, that Attorney General Drummond reversed a 1978 opinion of a, of a previous AG. So for 45 years, the standard stood that, no, they can't interrupt these state agency board meetings just because they want to. He changed that precedent, precedent completely, and said, "Yes, these legislators should be allowed to be in these meetings." Well, one of the state members really said publicly, she chastised them and said, "We can't do that. We have no promise that you're not going to go out and talk about these cases to the media, and that's on us. That's our information to protect." So they started just distributing this case information in writing to board members before about these sensitive cases. And they started just not going into executive session and just voting on it. They were already informed, and they were just voting on it. So they just went over this. And actually, it was frankly kind of great because there was so much more transparency to it. Well, that didn't work out so well for the legislators. And at a subsequent meeting, hours before the, the monthly meeting of the State Board, Attorney General Drummond pulled out their legal counsel from under him, said you can no longer use her. This is a legal counsel that had been approved by his office beforehand, and he replaced temporarily her with Brad Clark, who was Joy Hoffmeister's attorney at the OSDE. He was intimately involved, had interviewed the Shawnee Superintendent, whose, whose certification was up to be suspended because multiple girls had accused him of sexual misconduct in three different districts that he worked at. Brad Clark did not declare to the board that he had been completely involved in that case, though he recused himself from another case on the agenda. And then when he was asked during the meeting if Michael Beeson, who is the counsel for the current Oklahoma State Department of, of Education, could serve as both the board's attorney and the agency's attorney, and there was a lot of question marks about that. Brad Clark was specifically asked by Walters, "Did you ever serve in both positions?" And Brad Clark said, "I, I don't remember." He served in both positions for six years. It's all over the OSDE.
But he didn't remember the six years.
He didn't remember the six years. So the whole thing is just swimming with conflicts of interest. So that was sort of the attacks the board's been under, trying to keep kids safe. And now, since they couldn't thwart these good people that were really just trying to do the right thing, now Stitt's on board and apparently removing them, whether it's for these reasons, whether it's over the immigration issue, whether it's a combination of things, I cannot tell you yet. There needs to be a lot more reporting done on this and research.
Well, let me throw in Sheri's comment because this is, I think this is important. She said, "Well, there's three right there that have supported after-hours communication between school employees and our students, removing the healthy boundary" that House Bill 39, I'm not sure what that means. Oh, House Bill 39 something. I guess we missed a part of that. But yeah, so Dick Lowe and Sterling, and who else are the ones that are trying to take off? The, they're trying to modify the bill, oh, SB 3958.
Let me tell you about that.
Okay.
So there's actually the lead article up on v1sut.com is about this. So Representative Danny Sterling and now Dick Lowe is attached to this bill as well are seeking to undo some protections that Sheri Conley's actually on here. Representative Sheri Conley championed a bill last year, House Bill 3958. And what 3958 said is that teachers, coaches, school staff can no longer one-on-one call, text, digital communication with a student unless a parent or guardian is involved. Thank you very much. Okay? So prior to the start of the 2024-25 school year, all teachers and school staff at Oklahoma Public Schools had to be trained on this bill about how they could communicate. Now, there's exceptions. If there's an emergency, they can also use district platforms that are, are for academic purposes to communicate, because those are monitored by the district, right? So everyone was, had to be trained that week before school started. It was this long overdue reset of the boundaries between school and home. So this was one of the best things that happened last year. Just seven months later, Danny Sterling, who's a Republican, he's District 27, and Dick Lowe, who are both former school administrators. Danny Sterling was a principal at Tecumseh High School for years, and Dick Lowe was an administrator at Canadian Valley Tech for years. So they're sort of seeking to undo these protections. Both of them are former agriculture teachers, just so you sort of know where this is coming from. This is coming from education insiders. And what they're saying is, their House Bill 1937 says, it's already made it out of committee, that parents should have the option to opt out of that restriction of one-on-one communication between the coach and this player, the teacher and the student, the school staff and the child. Their reasons for doing this are really interesting, and you can read the quotes in the article. It feels a lot like it's inconvenient for teachers, and we don't really understand. He talks about, you know, a child's animal and the ag program might be sick outside of hours. You know, a coach, there might be a change in the, in the bus schedule or whatever for a game. But the bill, Representative Conley's bill, allowed for them to, they can group text a parent and the student. They can put their whole basketball team and all the parents in there, and they can group text. So it doesn't really make any sense why we would need to go back and put kids in danger of a potential predator when we really don't have to. They already have the ability to do that. Couple of considerations about this bill that really kind of scare me. If a parent, let's just say your kid's on the junior high basketball team, and a coach says, "Well, one of the requirements is you have to sign this opt-out because I need to be able to communicate with your kids." All those parents are going to sign that opt-out. We've had a lot of coach predators, right? And then the other thing that really concerns me is if this bill goes through and a parent signs something that says, "Yes, Coach Joe or ag teacher, Mr. Smith, can communicate without me on it and can text my children." What if the unthinkable does happen again, as it has so many times? What if that child then is sent inappropriate things? What if they're groomed into a sexual relationship with this adult? Does that affect the liability that the school might have? Does that affect the options that a parent might have? Or are now they going to say, "You signed the opt-out. That was your option. So anything that happens between that phone is no longer a problem." I, I don't know the answer to that, and they haven't answered that in the bill. They didn't even discuss that when it came out of committee.
And like Sheri says, I wouldn't say that 260 predators can be called a few bad actors. I mean, I mean, yeah. So, and, and Julia pointed out that it also protects good teachers. I mean, I told the story about, you know, when a, uh, kid, one of my, my students back in, uh, middle school, I just put my hand on his shoulder and said, come on, let's go out, because he was really being terrible. And the, he said, I'm going to go and tell it, and tell them you beat me up, or, you know, whatever. And because there's always something like that. And it was really important that it protected, uh, good teachers. Um, and Gracie says, there's never a reason school faculty should contact my child instead of me.
Exactly.
It's true.
They shouldn't have to. There was a time when we didn't have cell phones. If something went wrong at school, they called a parent at night. It wasn't, it wasn't like that. So I will say, there's a bit of irony in here because immediately before the committee passed this bill out of committee, advanced this bill, they advanced, uh, House Bill 1276, which prohibits students from using cell phones and smartwatches on school campuses.
I know.
We have this interesting dichotomy here where they're pushing for, our ed committees are now pushing for parents to not be able to contact students during the day, but then they're also pushing for these loopholes for school staff, teachers, coaches to be contacting kids without parents outside of school. So.
Well, let's not forget, nobody in the legislature, except for maybe three of them, stood up to decry the horrible, disgusting crap that's in our school libraries. It's like these people, I don't know how they get an R after their name, but then again, I don't think R means anything anymore. It's just a pretext of something. I don't know that it means anything anymore. But I mean, it's absolutely shocking to me that these people, I mean, it seems like they literally have an agenda. Dick Lowe, Sterling, it seems like they literally have, I, we know that you did. You were one of the three. Sheri said, I did. I know, we know you did. But unfortunately, nothing was going to happen because the majority of, of, uh, elected representatives didn't care. I mean, so it's just honestly, it's maddening. It's truly maddening to think that these people, I, I don't, I don't see how they care about the safety of kids, and I really don't see how Lowe and Sterling can argue that they do.
Well, um, so, so a theory here that I've had in covering all kinds of cases like these that we don't want to hear about in schools. And wrestling with the fact that this group of legislators, these are the same ones that wanted in the executive session. They wanted to disrupt the process of taking away certifications. Um, one thing that's really needed is, in our state legislature, legislature, the committees associated with education are dominated by former educators and former school administrators.
Yeah.
So these are the folks that the system worked well for, and dare I say, uh, the policy that has overwritten law, where school districts, when an accusation of abuse comes up that's related to a staff member, they end up accepting resignations rather, and then they stop everything. There's no investigation. He's no longer our employee, he or she's no longer our employee. We can't do anything about it. Um, that passing the trash to the next district, it's hard to believe that these legislators who were school administrators never participated in that in their years.
Yeah.
So there's a bit of a protection of potential sins of the past. And when we look at, we look at the, um, School Board Association, and we looked at the School Administrators Association. They're all run by former superintendents, principals, folks that may have made these decisions. They're not going to be our education reformers who make our kids safer.
It's called the fox.
Yes.
Guarding the hen house.
Hen house. Yes.
I mean, that's exact.
The far, fox is guarding your chicks.
Yeah.
Is what's happening.
Yeah.
Um, and when we look at, you know, in the article, and you can, you all can read it later, um, Sterling should know this, in his own high school, that he had a man that he hired and worked with for years. He hired a man who was recently caught, um, inappropriately texting a student. So we know this is happening. He, his district that he represents now is the home of Little Axe. This is where our entire harmful coaching series, where we followed a whole group of these coaches, um, gave a voice to these women who have been trying to yell in the wilderness about what happened to them during their time at Little Axe. And they just spread out professionally all over the state, all the way to the, the superintendent of Shawnee Schools, was very connected to the unions. Um, was, was even an employee at the State Department of Education for a short time after a major scandal where he was a superintendent. Um, this is definitely, if we were going to change things and do the people's work, we need to have more parental representation in those organizations. There's none. There's none in those organizations and on those committees in the legislature. That's my.
My arg. My argument has always been they scream about local control, and they'll say it's about local control, but only for something that they want. And then they'll say, well, the parents aren't doing this so that we need to do this. But then the more that, that they do it, the legislature, the less the parents get to do it. The less the parents get to do it, the less they want to do it, the more the state gets to do it. It's just, it is absolutely ludicrous. And part of the reason why I just cannot abide the Republican Party anymore is nobody wants to sign off to say that they, I mean, traditionally, the Republican Party was for smaller government, less, less taxation, you know, life. We had life, whether it was the protecting the unborn or elderly people, not allowing, you know, them to commit suicide. Um, the, I mean, there are certain free enterprise, not what we have right now, which is this, if you're my friend, I'll give you a tax credit thing. I mean, not that. Um, and, and if we couldn't get some people with Rs by their names to sign off on those things, then how do you know what they really care about, other than what they give you lip service when they're on this, on the stump, the political stump, right? And every single time I was involved with the Republican Party, and we would try to get something like that passed, there would, there is no way. There is absolutely no way. So if, if Republicans don't stand for anything, wha, what, what difference does it make if they have an R by their name, or a D by their name, or an L, or I, it doesn't, none of these designations mean anything, because monkeys could say, I, I mean.
No, they don't. And clearly, by their stances on things and their, and it's their actual actions, not what they say to the media, but by their actual actions. There are no, there is no difference. It is the univar, uniparty versus the unipeople is what, what I call it. The people's agenda against the establishment in Oklahoma. Uh, there's so many good comments here.
I know. I know. And I'm gonna put a couple of them in worse than a fox. This is literally Colonel Sanders guarding the hen house. He has something to gain from his guardianship, and that's a really good point, Lisa. Um, in the nineties, when I was in high school, we would have something like a teacher hanging out with students in the evening at Sonic.
Yeah. Yeah. Everyone you talk to, when, when someone.
I sound like a cat throwing up a furball.
Yes, they, everyone who talks to me, I get so many comments, I get so many emails saying, this was going on at my high school in Oklahoma.
And then Becky says, there's a bill proposing the state superintendent has to have been a former district leader. I'm not sure of the specific wording. That's a very small pool of possible candidates with very limited viewpoints, and I, I would agree with that as well. Um, over on X, I got a comment from, um, our friends at Rebuke, Woke and Go Vote. And she said that, and she was sharing a, I think it's a, an email that Reed Downey must have sent around. And she said, um, it says, Senator Pugh, I'm outraged by the firing of the three state school board members yesterday. They're good people dedicated to kids getting a good education. I demand the new board members not be confirmed, and furthermore, the terminated board members be reinstated. And I don't know, I think that's probably a pretty good idea that we ought to put together a letter writing campaign to our senators to just say, nope, we're not playing ball. Governor Stitt not going to do your thing. Nobody fires Kendra Wesson. I, I mean, no, it, nobody would pa, sorry, nobody would have a brain would fire Kendra Wesson. Julia says, I like it. So I think what we'll have to do is we'll have to put it together, a letter writing campaign and just say, you know, everybody send your senators a letter saying, do not confirm these new people and reinstate the people who were on there before.
I agree. I feel as though the things the people voted for when they brought Ryan Walters to office, um, were that schools were going to be safer, and these kind of things would stop. Um, if we get caught in this political battle, particularly, we haven't even talked about that we're moving into a year where there'll be a governor's race next year, this could get much, much worse. The, the work of that board protecting children could come to a screeching halt. Given that Attorney General Drummond has already declared his candidacy, and he has been known to attack that board in different ways. He will flip precedent to be able to do, to do it. He will file lawsuits. Um, and Ryan Walters has not declared for governor, but I've seen some informal polls on X that have him as the, the leader in those polls for governor among people on X. So, um, I have no inside knowledge about what's happening there, or who else is going to jump into this race. But the political rhetoric needs to be stopped. People need to be very vocal with their representatives that we don't want this, and with the Senate, that perhaps they don't want this. If that's your choice, that you don't want these changes, these new appointees approved.
Well, I find it interesting that we, you know, we had this picture that was linked in your article that we, I shared just a minute ago. Uh, Senator Pugh just laughing and throwing his head back at the state meeting after trying to get in there. So I don't know that, that, uh, it would seem to me from that, that Senator Pugh isn't interested in having those board members reinstated. Um, but I also hear that he might be interested in running for another office. So maybe that would, maybe that was, um, Sheri says disagree better.
That's a good point. I would reiterate, we've talked about this on a previous podcast, I believe, that Senator Pugh was among the, um, legislators when the piece of legislation was moving through in 2017, that would extend the statutes of limitations to allow for that up to year 45. It was, it was about all child abuse. It wasn't child sexual abuse. It wasn't just about in schools. It was our general. So there was, there was a criminal portion of it, and there was a civil portion of it, and it was good legislation, had they made it retroactive. But by the time that the legislature got through with it, there's one iteration that involves Senator Pugh where they put in the stipulation that if you're going to civilly sue an institution, which includes schools for failing to protect you from a known predator within the district or the institution, you have a two-year window to be able to do that. So that means, and, and that, that window can start at the age of majority, which is 18. So what that meant was that children
Yeah.
must come forward about a known predator in school doing something to them before, while they're still 19 at the oldest. Um, that smacks of some interference from the education establishment. And why Senator Pugh would have been involved in that and not fought that, I don't know. But after that, he became the chair of the education committee. So is that how this works? I don't know. Can you imagine, Jenny, with all of the suits we've seen against schools, people think there's just a flood. What people don't know is that's only the one where there was a brave teenager willing to come forward.
Correct.
Who may still be in the hands of an abuser.
Because Julie makes the point, children think that it's their fault.
Mm-hmm.
So they don't, they don't normally come forward and say, you know, hey, mom, I broke the lamp. And they're certainly not going to come forward and say, hey, mom, my teacher molested me. So, uh, it, it is very frustrating to me. And I wanted to know how Senator Pugh got to be head of the, um, Senate Committee on Education when he didn't. I don't think he's got any education in his background, does he?
No, he's actually one of the only among this group, and I'm trying to remember, uh, Pugh and Osborne were the only ones among that big group that we just named, who were trying to get into those executive sessions at the State Board of Ed that are not former coaches or educators or school administrators. There were only two in the group.
Um, also too, uh, Rebuke asks, did the community schools bill move out of committee? I know that's a different thing. Um, need to check because we were on podcasts when the, oh, no, it's at three. So the committee, I think, is getting ready to, uh, go in, so we'll have to watch that. Uh, Sheri says, so let's not forget the young man in southeast Oklahoma who committed suicide.
I don't know about that.
So you'll have to tell us about that, I guess, Sheri. We may have to.
Oh, he's. He's. And a sexual assault.
Yeah.
Well, it's that tragic.
Yeah. Well, um, I think we probably, because we're about at one hour and 30 for a special video that we were just going to kind of slap together. Um, don't get the two of us in a room and not expect us to talk for several hours. Um, and Sheri said that you can chat later. Um, so anything to close this out, other than Sit was wrong, I'm just going to say it. I don't, I mean, it's my personal opinion, but in my personal opinion, Sit was completely wrong about this. And that those board members should have stayed to do what they were saying, and that they were doing a really great job. And I think the, the, I, I'm not a huge fan of Ryan Walters. We've talked about this on the show before. I believe you can do a lot of things if you fly under the radar and you don't go around sticking people in the eye, because what happens when you do that is that they bow up, and they don't want to do anything that you want to do. So his approach, it would never be my approach. And I think his approach has actually slowed down a lot of things that could be happening because he's been getting pushed back from his own people. Um, and you can still do what you want to do and what's still right without having to, to be getting on Fox News every 20 minutes about it. And that's kind of my, my bottom line there. But that's not to say that what's going on at the State Department of Education right now isn't heads and shoulders and 10 million times better than what it was, um, under Joy Hoffmeister. So, I, I mean, I, I'm all for the program. I'm just not in the way of committing the program or committing to the program, or whatever you want to call it. And, and again, I do believe that, um, I, I'm just sick that Kendra's gone. And I don't know, she may be si, tried to talk to her yesterday, but her phone was going crazy. Um.
Becky Pollam had a really great comment here, and she's still thinking about the distraction between the two events yesterday. So we expected the release of a TPS audit. That did not happen, but, um, from what I understand, that the lawyers' efforts that stopped that from happening temporarily for two weeks were very last minute. So it was very expected by everyone that those findings were coming yesterday. So for the timing of this, if, if, if this about the board was in fact about a disagreement about immigration policy, that's been going on for almost two months between those two. Um, so that could have happened anytime. It, it, it feels like a distraction, but I will tell you, we're going to learn a lot more in two weeks when that audit comes out. Um, I'm, I think everyone should be watching very closely and pushing for more information that's related to what's happening at the federal level, as we learn more about the Department of Education, um, USAID, those funds that flowed into our state. How were they used? Were they used as they were supposed to be? Is there going to be something in that TPS audit? A district that's very steeped in supports for immigration? Will there be something there? The answer is, I don't know. This is all very new for everyone, journalists and voters alike.
Well, and Ralph said illegal immigrants are the money, is the moneymaker, and I, I just don't know how there's not, I don't know. Things just, you never know. They, they say politics make strange bedfellows, as we all know. We've all heard that, you know, particular saying. But the problem here is this, that I don't care if you're Republican, I don't care if you're Democrat, I don't, I don't really care what you are. I don't care what you are. But our kids are the ones that are suffering crappy educations. And it seems to me that nobody really wants to take the bull by the horns and call that out. And at least Ryan Walters has been doing that. I mean, I have a kid who goes to UCO right now. I've had another kid who's gone to UCO. So, I mean, I've had several of them go. When I went to UCO, I, I really loved it. I mean, I get reports back from there, and then I have a friend who's a teacher at UCO. It's, it's, but it, it's like being on in, in another world. It's like traveling to another world. I mean, I mean, people, you know, it's just nothing at all the way it used to be. And there's, at all. And I don't think we're paying attention to education. Ronald Reagan said that we were within one generation of losing America and, and everything that went with it. And when you miseducate a child and you do it on purpose, which is what the Marxists intended, I mean, this whole thing is intended. When you do that, you end up creating what we are now. Where I just posted a teacher the other day who was talking about the fact that he is indoctrinating these other teachers that he knows because he hates America. And, you know, he's indoctrinating these other teachers in that, you know, American hatred, or whatever.
Well, there's definitely a discussion to be had when someone like, I said, the Oklahoma City Public School Superintendent says, our kids speak seventy-one languages. Is there any realistic expectation that we're going to provide quality education to public school students in seventy-one languages? Do we have the resource? How is that affecting things? So I think it's a legitimate conversation, without being deemed hateful or anti-immigrant, to say, is this realistic? Okay, yes, and I think a good comment that we should be watching that result. Tulsa Public Schools, the fourteen-day countdown is on.
Yep. Well, and it's interesting here because Ralph said there was no penalty if she'd gone ahead with the presentation. TPS may not really like the delay. That's kind of interesting. I didn't, did you know that?
No, I did not. I did not. So State Auditor Cindy Byrd didn't answer any questions. It was about a three-minute press conference. She said that she was going to give those results, but then she said that she couldn't even answer any questions. So I'm wondering if that's the way they're interpreting the law there. It doesn't sound like it.
It may be, or their in-house counsel said, you know, this is what we're going to do. So I don't, I don't know exactly, you know, what that happened. And I don't know if we can get Cindy on to talk about that, the audit afterwards. And we, I probably should check and see because it would be, you know, quite interesting to, to have her on and chat with her about that.
I do want to give a compliment to the Tulsa grassroots groups.
Oh, yeah.
Even especially the Oklahoma Doge site. I don't think the legislature was so happy that the grassroots grabbed that label before they could. But they have done an exceptional job up there of putting public pressure on this to get that audit. And taxpayers deserve to have it. I credit them. I tell grassroots people that they, they are the new media. They just don't know it yet.
Yeah, Tulsa Parents Voice was absolutely instrumental and just hammering, 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 hammering that. And yeah, she did a whole lot of work to get that, get that done. And I'm, I'm sure it's a disappointment not to have that. But it's, it's like somebody else said up here. Julia said, we need to talk about the Tulsa PS report every day from now until, to be sure everybody's paying attention, because as Cindy said, the report will not change. So, you know, there you have it. Okay, well, we're going to get off of here now because even though we have a huge audience, and we've, we've, I'm sure both of us have really enjoyed doing this. And it's disappointing that we have to do it. You know, I'm sick of getting mad at our government. I would just like to be able to have a red state that function as a red state. We don't seem to be able to do that. But I think the people who come on and watch us and comment and then share these videos later are really helping us to get our red state status back. We just need to throw out some of these non-red staters to get that accomplished. So there you go.
Thank you very much. It was interesting to be able to, before I've even reported on it, think through these things with you and all of these amazing commentators.
Yeah. Well, I know, no joke, we'll have more, we'll both be adding to the, you know, the stuff that we've done as things come out. And I can't wait to talk to you about yours again next. And we've got you for the nineteenth next month, too. So we'll be talking to you again. All right. Thank you so much. We appreciate you, Mary. We appreciate all of you viewers. Thank you for tuning into this weird special we just threw together at one o'clock today. But we really do appreciate it. Please, 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 please share. Please just share this and, and get people thinking about what's going on. And, and if you see people who say, well, good for Stu, we needed to get something done, you might just talk to them about who the board members were and why it is that we're, you know, why this is extremely concerning and why I'm just mad on a wet hornet. So, or hen, whatever that is. All right, everybody, we will talk to you again soon. See you on Friday morning at nine AM with Robert Keyes, and we'll see you then. Thanks so much. Bye-bye.